Am I supposed to speak? No.
And thank you for joining us for the College of Marin Candidate Forum. We welcome our viewers joining us by live stream on YouTube, and we encourage you to engage in tonight's discussion by submitting questions throughout the program. And thank you very much for your patience, a few technical glitches, but we're on board and it should be a great program. I'm Luanne Mullin, President of ESCOM, and I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing and moderating this program tonight. And also thanks to our community outreach partner, Marin Promise, for supporting this program as well. This year, the League of Women Voters is celebrating 100 years in following their mission, which is to empower voters and defend democracy. And moderating candidate forums is an important part of their vision of democracy, where every citizen has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The League is a nonpartisan organization, and they never oppose or support any individual or any political party. Before getting into the program tonight, just a few words about ESCOM, which means Ameritas Students of College of Marin. And we are an incredibly vital group of the College of Marin, 2,000 strong, all interested in lifelong learning. In fact, College of Marin was the founder of this organization in 1973, nearly 50 years ago. They were real pioneers in the innovative use of community college, and we're benefiting from it. Our members engage in community education classes, social events, speaker series, clubs, literary pursuits, you name it, everything the College of Marin has to offer. And as you can imagine, we've all taken on this virtual lifelong learning and really come aboard. I mean, it's amazing how our members have just embraced this new technology, and we've just been stunned with the way our programs have taken off, the number of people that attend our forums and our pop-ups. Our club leaders report that nearly 600 people each month take advantage of the clubs and sign on and continue discussions. So I guess that's what lifelong learning is all about, the ability to adapt to change and the resilience to accept adversity and move forward. So here we are, and we welcome you to join us at any point. All right, I'm going to turn over the reins to the program tonight and to the League moderator, Lori Nardone.
Thank you. And as I watch my internet go in and out, I keep my fingers crossed here. My name is Lori Nardone, and I'm your moderator for this evening's forum. Thank you for joining us for this candidate forum hosted by Ameritas Students College of Marin, which I will refer to as ESCOM, and featuring candidates running for Marin Community College District Board of Governors. Slide one, please. Thank you to ESCOM for inviting the League to moderate. We are honored to be here. I would also like to thank our community outreach partner, Marin Promise. Slide two, please. With me is League member Linda Sula as timekeeper. Off screen, we have Ann Batman and Nancy Weber to review questions, and Nancy Bell and DeeDee Butori providing Zoom support, along with the team at the Community Media Center of Marin. Thank you. The League is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. In addition to promoting voter education, the League advocates for issues and may take positions on issues that arise in ballot measures. I would like to remind everyone that the candidates have all agreed to participate under ground rules set for this forum. In order to ensure impartiality, it is the League's policy that candidate forum moderators and question review team members not be actively involved in a candidate's campaign. This evening's forum is being livestreamed on the League's YouTube channel and facilitated through our partnership with the Community Media Center of Marin. This event is also being recorded and will be available on our website at MarinLWV.org. For broader community access, a gavel-to-gavel production will be rebroadcast on CMCMTV's Channel 30. Days and times will be posted on our website. I would like to briefly explain the roles of the timekeeper and question review team. To assure our candidates stay within the allotted time, they will see a box designated "clock." At the appropriate time, the box will turn yellow, indicating the candidate has 30 seconds remaining for their response. The box will remain yellow for approximately 10 seconds and will then go black. When the box turns red, the candidate should complete the sentence thereon. And yes, my job is to give them the hook. You may submit your questions to the email address that's displayed on the screen, COMTrustees@MarinLWV.org, at any time during the forum. Our question review team is standing by to review incoming questions. And I want to assure you that they do not censor the questions. They simply review them to avoid duplication and to check for anything that might be considered inappropriate. If you do not recognize your question, it might have been combined with other questions on the same topic. Due to the time constraints of this forum, we may not be able to pose all the questions that are submitted. Slide three, please. There are six candidates running for four seats on the Marin Community College District Board of Governors, five of whom are with us this evening: Eva Long, Paul De Silva, Philip Cranenberg, Stephanie O'Brien, and Stuart Tannenberg. Eva Long is joining us by phone tonight. Robbie Powellson will not be joining us. Thank you. The candidates have been invited to make a two-minute opening statement. After that, they will each have one minute to answer each question. To be fair, I will rotate the order in which they respond to the questions. For opening statements, we will begin with Eva Long. Eva, would you please unmute yourself and give us your opening statement?
Good evening. I'm Eva Long, and I'm delighted to be here. And I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the College of Marin, Ameritas College, for giving me the opportunity to say some words about my history with the Board of Trustees. I just want to very quickly just summarize some things that have happened in the last four to eight years. And why eight years? Because we were uncontested during the last term. So I'm merging about eight years of work in my summary. The first is I have a proven track record of education, teaching and learning, medical science research, and love working with people. Fulfilling the trust was very important to me throughout the years that I've served as a trustee. And that means to me that I follow up with inquiries, I do my best, I read the board backups, and am very interested in current events about colleges and universities. I also kept my promise to students and the Marin community, and I try very much to really reach out to many of the Marin community groups as well as the Marin community. I provided key educational leadership in crises with teamwork, and that means that the board's role basically is not the how, but the what. And so it's important that we, in fact, worked together during the crisis with the virus. I also was able to help sustain a stable board by leadership experience and know-how. Some of the recent best years of mutual understanding to get the job done actually happened in the last decade, like within the last 10 years. I also am-
Eva, Eva, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop you. That time is up.
All right, thank you.
Okay, if you could please re-mute. And Paul, if you want to unmute yourself and give us your opening statement.
Thank you very much for inviting me. Over the last 23 years, I taught biology, natural history, environmental science, and environmental landscaping at the College of Marin. I taught more than 5,000 students on both campuses. I also was a department chair and a student myself. I used many techniques to make learning interesting. I also forged connections with many local agencies and organizations and reached out to underserved communities. I played key roles in the establishment of the farm at IVC, the Science Museum at Kentfield, and the field station in Bullinas. I pointed out inefficiency and waste and made suggestions for improvement. Earlier this year, I went through the sudden shift to remote learning. I worked 12 hours a day, seven days a week, to get the job done. Now, I'm happy I did this. I realized that I participated in the largest educational experiment ever conducted on earth. Now we are faced with the challenge and the opportunity of reinventing education to meet our multiple public health, environmental equity, and economic crises. We need to move away from the factory model to a more humanistic model, one that recognizes the need to inspire each and every student. The board needs an experienced educator at this critical time. For that reason, I've been endorsed by the College of Marin Honor Student Society, the United Professors of Marin, the Sierra Club, and the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers. I will return the focus of the College of Marin to teaching and learning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Philip, would you like to unmute yourself and give us, or Phil, sorry, your opening statement?
Thank you very much for organizing this event, and good evening. As a current College of Marin trustee, I would be honored to continue to serve our community in this capacity. I joined the board when it was in crisis, unable to govern itself effectively. During my tenure, I helped enhance the board's effectiveness through improved fiscal management, collaboration, Indian Valley campus utilization, and sustainable facility modernization. I also helped enhance remote learning options, which helped prepare the college for the need to switch to more remote learning during the pandemic, as well as helped establish a pension liability trust fund, a AAA bond rating upgrade, and refinance bond to save taxpayer money, greatly contributing to comms health. My top priorities will continue to be maintaining a strong fiscal profile, enhancing diversity, equity, environmental stewardship, and IVC utilization, integrating sustainability into college operations, supporting our at-risk community members, offering more project-based and multidisciplinary courses, and modernizing course offerings and facilities to serve all, including K-12 partners during and beyond this pandemic. I'm a Stanford University graduate with a Leadership for Sustainability certificate and 25-plus years of finance experience. Numerous community organizations and leaders have endorsed my campaign in order for me to continue to manage this community asset for the benefit of the common man and woman. Please visit my website, philcrannenberg.com, to see the list of my endorsements, community service, and background. That's Cranenberg with a K. I would appreciate your vote to keep the momentum going. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Stephanie, would you like to unmute yourself? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Lori, the League of Women Voters, and all the ESCOM folks. This is a fantastic opportunity. I really appreciate it. I'd like to share with you my personal commitment to community colleges. This has been a lifetime passion for me, starting when I began my college experience down at Foothill Community College in Los Angeles Hills. It's been such a privilege for me to serve our community for the past nine years. I've been actively engaged in creating and sustaining a collaborative, productive, and engaged board. The role of a trustee is one that must effectively absorb a wide variety of data, input from all stakeholders, and make decisions that both address the current needs as well as the future needs. The next four years require stable leadership, pragmatic decision-making, and the ability to stay focused on the most important aspect of our mission, and that is the students. I appreciate this opportunity to share with the League and the viewers my commitment to our community, our community gem, excuse me, the College of Marin. And I ask for your vote and your support. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, Stuart, would you like to unmute yourself and give us your opening statement?
Thank you and good evening, everybody. I'm Stuart Tannenberg. I serve as the current board president. I have over 40 years of dedicated leadership experience serving Marin County and Marin's education community on various boards, commissions, and committees where collaboration and decision-making is critical and essential. My decision-making process is active learning, effective clear communication, collaboration, transparency, and consensus building. I am seeking reelection, continuing as your trusted, effective, and productive trustee representative on the College of Marin governing board. Continuity and leadership is critical at this time as the board deals with the delivery of quality education under a pandemic, completing our Measure B facilities modernization projects, and maintaining fiscal integrity with budget, with proposed budget cuts. Working in collaboration with my board colleagues, I want to continue the progress we've made in the areas of fiscal responsibility, institutional excellence, student success and academic excellence, COVID-19 response, our board governance, sustainability best practices, community engagement, and comms initiatives for inclusion, diversity, and equity. I will continue to support the College of Marin's commitment to educational excellence grounded in creating equitable opportunities and fostering student success for all of our diverse college community. I will continue providing the leadership, engagement, and discipline required to ensure accountability and oversight while putting students first in every decision. I will work to protect the district's physical health and support the delivery of quality education and workforce readiness through continued long-range planning, assuring institutional vitality and responsiveness. Respectfully, I ask for your vote and your endorsement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move into our questions, and as I said, we'll start with a different person every time. So for the first question, we're going to start with Paul. You can unmute yourself. So the first question is, and feel free to ask me to repeat it at any time, what do you see as the most critical issue facing the college as a result of the pandemic? And how would you address this issue or these issues?
The most critical issue facing the college is how to maintain the quality of education while also keeping everyone safe. And then as we move forward, of course, right now, the important thing is to follow the dictates of our local public health officials, but then also take advantage of the expertise of our trustees, faculty, and staff, because they know what's happening in the spaces that have now been used on a part-time basis to recommence the in-person learning. As we move forward, we're going to have to reinvent education more than we have so far. And for that reason, we're going to have to take advantage of the same expertise that people have, educators have, of making very high-quality learning experiences.
Thank you. Okay, Phil, would you like to unmute yourself and answer that question?
Yes. So I think the most important part is to modify the educational delivery mechanism and the facility usage to match teaching and learning environment that's being altered during this pandemic and for the longer term, such as a hybrid model of more online courses for basic courses with some face-to-face instruction rather than only face-to-face. I've advocated, and we've successfully implemented more online programs over the years, which prepared us for this pandemic, and that's leadership and vision. And I think I will continue to be able to offer that sort of thinking and do diligence. I think we need to also focus on just balancing all the input we get from this and keep the students in mind first. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Stephanie, would you like to unmute and answer? Thank you.
Thank you. So our number one objective here has to be to continue to our mission of serving our students. We have a lot of students who are first generation, who are underrepresented, who are basically underfunded and have struggled tremendously trying to adapt to this pandemic. That's our number one goal. The second issue really is when the CARES funding, CARES Act funding runs out, and the college needs to shoulder the burden of maintaining this healthy environment, safe environment for both the students and the staff, and to be able to sustain the eventual financial hit that the pandemic is going to cause to the funds of the college is our primary issue.
Thank you. Okay, Stuart, do you want to unmute yourself and answer that?
Lori, would you mind repeating the question?
Sure. It is, what do you see as the most critical issues facing the college as a result of the pandemic, and how would you address these issues?
Okay, thank you. Number one, it actually obviously is the fiscal impact of having to provide services that typically the college wouldn't have to deal with. Second issue is how do we maintain services that students probably need more of in order to sustain online distance learning? There's probably more tutoring that's going to be required. We have a lot of ESL students that are impacted and get certain services from the college. That also impacts our fiscal responsibility. And then we also need to make sure that those programs that we have on campus, our OPS program, our Emoja 20 programs, our free textbook programs, our food insecurity programs, where we're able to give students food, that we're able to sustain those programs as well. But the bottom line is we need to serve the students, and we have to make sure that they have a successful academic year, and we need to do everything we can to make that happen.
Thank you. And Eva, do you want to unmute yourself and answer that question? Start six.
I have about five points, and the very first priority that I feel that's important is health and safety of faculty, staff, and our students. There are lots of changes in relation to how we have organized the classrooms. The safety issues are very important, and if it's possible, that testing at some point will need to be considered. I've also brought to the board's attention that I think we've done a wonderful job on online instruction. My concern is, what's the face time of faculty in front of students, live students, that are not behind a computer? Because I think that the important part is that we merge the mind and the heart in learning, and that the faculty instruction, the quality of time in front of students is really important. So I, for one, have asked that we have some idea, you know, how much time are we spending online versus direct instruction? I also think that laboratories-
Eva, Eva, I'm sorry. I know you can't see this, but I need to stop you. It's, we've grown past the minute. But thank you. I mean, it goes by fast. I know it goes by fast. Okay. For our next question, we're going to start with Phil.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I misunderstood your first question. I thought that last question was one issue, but it sounded like when you repeated, you said-
It was an S.
Issues with an S. So I just said one. So I don't know if you wanted more than that.
I apologize, but I apologize. I think I did say without an S the first time, and I didn't notice it that there was an S, but rather than extend that, I bet you you'll be able to work it into another answer that we're going to have here.
Trying to be clear. Thank you.
I apologize. Okay, you get the first shot at this one, and I promise to read it completely accurately. Have you considered ways to broaden the community education programs by working more collaboratively with, for example, Santa Rosa Community College? Because they've had a lot of programs, and some of them are at much lower cost than what we're, what we have access to in Marin.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I've encouraged the administration and the faculty, for that matter as well, to partner in all ways possible with other educational institutions or others. We built a BA program with Sonoma State, which was something that we worked out through reaching out and providing that. I think we can do that with the JC up there and collaborating back and forth. And I think in this whole online hybrid model, we'll be able to do more and more of that with all sorts of institutions and offer a richer level of content for everybody. We've also worked with the local high schools and allow them to work through programs such as Compass to strengthen their offering as well.
Thank you. Stephanie, would you like to tackle that question?
Thank you. I'm very supportive of any partnerships that the college can engage in. And with the pandemic, one of the things that has opened up for many institutions is how to leverage those partnerships actually across the country. There's a lot of professional relationships that are being created that will help to bring to our computers and to our facility classes that had not even been considered in the past. A lot of institutions are sort of opening their doors to those types of partnerships. So it's something that's new to be explored. Phil already touched on some of the things we've already been doing, but this board has been very open to that type of collaboration, and I imagine we will continue to emphasize that in future.
Great, thank you. Stuart, would you like to unmute and answer that?
I think our board has been very proactive in collaboration and partnerships. We have examples of our workforce development programs that we do in collaboration with other junior colleges in the district, and Santa Rosa Junior College in particular. As far as ESCOM goes, a lot of those course, non-credit courses are kind of like grassroots courses that are developed within the ESCOM community that are kind of supported by the members of ESCOM. And I think it's probably a good idea to tap into resources at other JCs to find out what courses are being offered and see if we could also implement those in our programs as well. But the main thing is partnerships and collaboration definitely are a big plus for the College of Marin.
Thank you. Okay, Eva, do you want to, and I'll try and give you the 30-second notice while you're talking. So do you want to unmute?
Thank you. That'd be helpful.
Okay, you're up. Eva? Your turn to answer. And if you're talking, you're on mute.
Okay, thank you. Because I've seen community education and its programs little by little being reduced, we have not actually been able to refund what we have lost. And I have a huge concern about that because the community of seniors and seniors who are very young at heart benefits greatly in terms of learning, learning new things. And particularly, the term lifelong education is really something that is very helpful.
You're halfway through.
Yeah. And in terms of partnerships, I can only use the model where I'm the founder of the Mindy Medical School, and we actually did many partnership programs in that program in order to share resources or even donations and so forth. I think we can do a lot more, but it takes people power to do that. And I think that the board that's in front of us can be thinking about many of those ideas because many of them are not dollar issues.
Thank you. Okay, and Paul, do you want to, oh, you're already unmuted. Perfect.
Okay, yes, I think there are two issues really with community education. One is the diversity of course offerings, and the other is affordability. I know we talk a lot about affordable housing. I think we should also think about affordable education. So I know that has been a barrier to many folks who would like to continue their lifelong learning. As the past president of a professional organization and as a member and board member of many community organizations, I would also very much explore the collaboration with these organizations in the delivery of future community education classes. We should also look out to our public agencies as potential collaborators, and of course, as others have mentioned, to other academic institutions. So again, I think that community education is a one, an ESCOM, wonderful programs. We must support them strongly as we go forward. We all know that during this pandemic, we have had to maintain our creativity. This is a great way to do that.
Thank you. Okay, for our next one, we're going to start with Stephanie. And the question is, in view of the fact that nearly 25% of the voters in Marin live in Nevada, do you have any ideas and/or a plan to add some more academic and career tech programs at the Indian Valley campus? Do you want to unmute yourself?
Please, thank you. No, absolutely. We have spent a great deal of time over the last nine years since I joined the board focusing on how to leverage and improve on the academic programs at the Indian Valley campus. And the changes have been phenomenal, not only to the physical plant, you've seen- And the changes have been phenomenal, not only to the physical plant. You've seen a lot of new buildings. There's some wonderful things going on there. There are very strong community involvement with the Friends of IBC, helping us to drive and, and decide what is the best I'm at a loss for words, best combination of academic classes and community supported programs. So that will continue. I think we are still underusing that, undervaluing that, that community asset. And I will continue to push as I have for the last nine years.
Thank you. Stuart, you want to unmute yourself and answer that question?
Thank you. The IBC campus has actually, you know, gone through a rejuvenation using our bond C money, money and our measure B money. That campus has had additional classrooms added and laboratories added. We would like to move more of our core courses up to the IBC campus. And we're also improving many of the other facilities on the campus as well. We've rebuilt the organic farm. We've added classrooms, a demonstration kitchen out there. We've added a hospitality program that was part of that rejuvenation of the organic farm. So if you haven't been to that campus, please come out, take a look at the construction. We're building a new me walk fitness and aquatic center and other new construction and rehab going on. But yes, we want to get more students participating in courses out at IBC and providing more student services out there as well.
Great. Thank you. And Eva, you are, do you want to unmute yourself and answer?
Yes.
I, I think you just muted yourself. You need to unmute?
I think there's a huge distinction, distinction between Kent Field and IBC. And it's still, I would say a cluster of thoughts about what IBC should look like. I've always proposed that we not, and in fact, this was one of the criticisms that many of the career tech jobs were given at IBC. And some of the reaction was they want core classes, academic classes there as well. And we made an effort to do that, but it was done in a way that we didn't ask the students, would you take English or math or science? If you were at the IBC campus. So we really need to look at that and evaluate it again. Because I think it's time to talk about that we, we want them to have access to not the same identical program, but definitely core academic classes.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Paul, do you want to unmute yourself and answer that one?
Yes, I think as an educator, I would emphasize functionality of the spaces and also the tie-in with curriculum, the special qualities of the IBC campus and complementarity within different parts of the same campus and with the other campuses. In terms of special qualities, I was the first to suggest IBC as the location for the farm. I was also, I think, the first to suggest IBC as the ideal place for an enlarged astronomy program. And I know that there have been wonderful connections with introductory biology at, at IBC and the Nevada High Schools. And so once again, I would emphasize functionality. And I think we have to get away from the old view of IBC versus Kent Field. We have to think of how this, everything within one campus and every, and things among different campuses, and we don't want to forget Belinas either, can work together to provide the best education for all of Marin.
Thank you. Okay. And then Phil, do you want to unmute yourself and?
Yep. Thank you. COMS made significant progress in increasing IBC's enrollment over the years. Improvements in construction, new buildings and infrastructure. I continue to be a supporter of equitable allocation of classes and facility modernization between the two campuses. A balance of IBC student enrollment and related modernization of facilities, facilities. Enhancing a sense of community through the increased community participation. But we need to get more data and we've done a lot of, you know, outreach. We continue to need to update that, given we're going through this pandemic of what opportunities there are for career tech and academic and reaching out and blending the two. But we made a lot of progress. The facilities are improving. We need to go ahead and improve the enrollment and the programs accordingly.
Thank you. Okay, I want to remind our viewers that you are invited to submit your questions to comtrustees@marinlwv.org. For our next question, we will start with Stuart first. And the question is, do you feel it would be beneficial to create student or faculty housing on either campus of College of Marin?
That's a good question. Over the years, there's always been talk about housing at IBC. For the last two years, we actually have as a board been studying the issue of providing employee housing out at IBC. We haven't really talked in depth about student housing, but more about employee housing and the need for affordable housing in Marin. So we have done some initial planning. We've gotten some data that we're analyzing and we're, we're kind of moving along. And there seems to be consensus on the board that this would be something that we need to continue to look at and, and study. But right now we're looking at an employee housing situation.
Thank you.
And it's a good idea. And yes, it's a good idea.
Okay, Eva, do you want to unmute yourself and answer that? Can't hear you. Other way.
On, on the issue of housing, I think at this point in time, the receptivity for having housing on our campus or even purchasing housing types as part of the investment of the college has been discussed. And I think it's a good time because there's a lot of shifting of people with single family homes who may not actually be in the area anymore and so forth. So I think it's a topic that we have explored as as our speaker, Stuart summarized very well.
Okay. Thank you. Paul, do you want to unmute yourself and answer that question?
Well, nobody can be against housing. The question is how it is built and how it is operated. So I think that the College of Marin, first of all, is an educational institution and has to make sure that if it gets into the real estate business, that the tail doesn't end up wagging the dog. On the other hand, if it could actually implement housing well, it could do that to high environmental standards to become a model for the rest of Marin, that would be great. But as an educator, I also suggest another opportunity. And this is to make questions such as this into learning, project-based learning enterprises. So why not have this study not just being done by the board, but by the students, the faculty and the staff? They have the expertise and experience to investigate these questions as part of the educational process. So I would encourage that to be done in the future. I know there's a housing study going on now. Wouldn't it be great for the, for the social science faculty and the students actually be carrying out that survey instead of having it contracted out to an outside company?
Thank you. Okay, Phil, would you like to unmute yourself and answer that question?
Thank you. Workforce housing is critical and that's the area we've started looking at in terms of employee housing. And it helps attract employees. It reduces greenhouse gas emissions generated by long commutes outside, from outside Marin. You know, super commuters that, you know, commute more than an hour and a half. There's at least 3% in the Bay Area. I'm in favor of continuing to explore affordable employee housing at IBC with all input from all stakeholders. Housing's for, housing for employees at IBC will improve the sustainability of the college, reducing traffic and so on. It'll also enhance the college's ability to attract and retain quality employees. And employees living on campus will also help revitalize the campus. I'm in favor of employee housing at IBC. It takes everybody's, all the stakeholders' input into consideration.
Thank you. And Stephanie?
Thank you so much. We actually, as a, as a district, recently purchased some residential units and some commercial units in Kent Field around the corner from the college with the intention of providing some staff housing that's currently underway. Also, we're in the middle, as Paul alluded, we're in the middle of doing an internal survey through the college to find out what the appetite is for staff housing regardless of the location. But the issue of affordable housing for students, faculty and staff is, is a real issue. It's been an issue for some time. There hasn't been an appetite for people to discuss it until the last few years. But it also needs to be explored very carefully. Some of our peers have done some very successful partnerships with what are known as public private partnerships, P3. And this, they, these kinds of arrangements can make these programs a reality, both financially and operationally.
Thank you. And then it goes by fast. Eva, okay, we're going to have our next question answered by you first. How should the board play a leadership role in advancing racial and social equity at College of Marin? And you need to unmute?
First, we have actually developed a process for some exploration and assessment on the current condition. We have quite a few kind of star-studded programs that we started about five, six years ago that just received a national award from the Community College League. And so the students have gotten a very valuable asset and program during that time. I think much more needs to be done at the faculty level and staff level and perhaps even administration. So that we really check on and monitor the level of whatever racism there is, you know, in how we teach and what we do with students in terms of their ability and to help them be what I call geniuses now that everybody has genius. We just have to awaken it. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Paul, would you like to unmute and answer that?
Thank you. Yes, I think as a mixed-race educator, I look at this a little differently. I know that there are two major areas, programs and individual people. So the programs that the College of Marin has instituted over the years, and I've participated in many of them, the Puente, the emoji learning communities, the Compass, Summer Bridge, those are all wonderful. And also the faculty and staff discussions. But we have to focus on the individual learning experiences. We have to get away from this idea that all students are going to be fitting into holes of one size. And therefore we have to speak to each individual student's talents and backgrounds to inspire those students. And some of these things sound crazy, but educators know they work. For example, my colleague Nino Cuciaras, paper airplane physics program down with the Sausalito Marin City School District. Well, we can, I've proposed a new oral history program for our centennial that will actually involve students and faculty in writing the history of the College of Marin and all of its different communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Phil, would you like to unmute? And thank you.
Thank you. So the college has done a lot, as have been mentioned. I mean, the Compass Program, Summer Bridge, Emoja, and so on and so forth. And this has been in our planning and we've been working on this for eight to 10 years plus. It's not a coincidence that we won the 2020 Dr. John W. Rice Award for Diversity and Equity. Of all the 115 community colleges, we just won that last month. And it's because we had students of color increasing and improving in their performance. And we had more faculty as a percentage increase in, as a percentage of the faculty of color overall for the last three years. I think we need to do more outreach to certain at-risk students because they have huge opportunities to learn more. And it's not a one fit, one size fits all. It's teaching to that person based on their interests and where they are. And I think that's the opportunity for the college.
Thank you. Stephanie, would you like to unmute?
Yes. Would you repeat the question? I want to make sure I answer it correctly.
Yes. Let's see. Nope, it was this one. How should the board play a leadership role in advancing racial and social equity at College of Marin?
Great. That's what, that's what I thought it was. So, so one of the, the key things to remember is a community college board is a policy board. We set policy, we set direction. We're, we're the direction that the college is going, not how it's being done. And so it is incumbent upon us as policy trustees, policy board members, to be able to set a, a vision that is moving in the right direction. And then to ask the right questions and make sure that those visions and those goals are being achieved. So while we can get into the weeds about how things are being accomplished, as Phil just mentioned, you know, the John W. Rice Award was a statewide award against basically, we had 114 competitors for that recognition. And we've done a remarkable job for being recognized for our progress. And that is because of the board's vision and the board's direction. I'll continue that work.
Thank you. And Stuart, do you want to unmute yourself? And thank you.
Yeah. Yes, I just like to echo what my colleagues said, but also emphasize too that the, you know, the board, we work in a, in a shared governance role. And I think it's the board's opportunity to support through our college council and the committees that work, you know, within the college. We need to support those activities that support our students of, of color. And I think we're doing a good job on the policy and we need to make sure that our policies are up to date and promote the ideas of inclusive inclusivity, diversity, equity, and taking appropriate action to deliver those services. And I think that right now we have about 30% of our student population are Hispanic. They have specific needs that other students don't have. So kind of what Paul said, we, we need, it's not one size fits all. We need to identify those individuals and provide services to those students and figure out what their particular needs are and make sure that their needs are met with the idea. And also in our hiring practices as a board, we need to make sure that equity and diversity are part of that as well.
Thank you. Okay, for our next question, we will start with Paul first. You can unmute yourself. What do you see as the primary financial challenges facing College of Marin? And how do you propose closing the financial gaps?
Well, at present, the financial challenge fortunately is still a little bit in the future because the fortunate situation we have is a basic aid district gives us property tax revenues from the County of Marin. So our Vice President for Business Services has projected that up until 2024, we're going to have a positive budget situation with a 10% reserve. As we go forward, of course, that might all change. And we know that even the projections for the next couple of years in this pandemic situation could change very quickly. So I think that one of the things we have to make sure we do is that we do not cut essential programs and classes. And this is something I know people were alluding to before with, with the SCOM programs. But we have to maintain our curriculum. We have to offer diversity. We have to see where else can we cut things? Can we cut things in administration? Can we cut things where there are duplication of services? And above all, maintain the quality of our education and our offerings.
Thank you. And Phil, would you like to unmute yourself and answer that?
I've helped control COMS spending. When I first came on the board, there was only a 3% reserve and financial situation was in disarray and dysfunction. We built up reserves to double digits and in the prior financial crisis, we didn't cut any jobs like everybody else did in the state. This time we're still in pretty good shape relatively speaking because we are a self-sustaining district. And we've been managing, as I recommended, a three-year rolling budget going forward. So we've had a triple A bond rating that upgraded. We've, we've worked hard to maintain this. And I think we're going to continue to have to tighten our belt because going forward, it's going to be a challenge. I think we will continue to balance the priorities for the college. That's our role. How to allocate resources in the most appropriate and fair manner. And we will be conscientious, but if we are a housing, we're based on housing in Marin County, we're fortunate as long as that stays steady.
Thank you. And Stephanie, would you like to unmute yourself and answer that question?
Thank you so much. So as it's So, as has been stated, we are a self-supporting district. And what that means is that the property values in our community are very high, and it allows us to fund more than what the state would give us. And right now, that, that disparity is 40%. So if something were to happen uh, to our property values, we would, we could lose up to 40% of our, our revenue. Um, we're very vulnerable to risk, as uh, one of our other trustees has said many times. It's not when the earthquake is gonna hit, or whether the earthquake's gonna hit, it's when it is. And now we have an annual fire risk. So I like to say budgets are statements of values, and we value the education that we're delivering to our students, and that comes first and foremost. But we also have a responsibility, the taxpayers of Marin, to make sure that we manage their funds, their resources, because it is truly the County of Marin's money. So I stay focused on that.
Thank you. Stuart, you wanna unmute yourself and answer that question?
I mean, one of our primary responsibilities as trustees, as fiduciaries, protecting the taxpayers' dollars and making sure that that money is spent well. Uh, we are actually this month gonna approve our, our next budget. And part of that is the fact that we're able to build up a 10.5% reserve. So as we move forward to three years down the road, when we could have some impacts on our property tax, because that was already stated, we are a basic age, self-funded district. Hopefully, we'll maintain our reserves and have those extra dollars. But the main thing is, we need to continually manage the budget, manage how we spend the money, make sure we are maximizing the efficiency of all of the taxpayers' dollars as we go through this uh, process.
Thank you. Okay, and then Eva, if you wanna unmute yourself and answer that question?
Uh, I wanna start with uh, the concept of uh, asset management and have had a lot of good support from my fellow colleagues about that. That we look at the things that we own and that uh, generate income as well as um, space or whatever it is that we need. I think if we focus at least some part of our discussion in the future on asset management, we may find that we have ability to generate income and/or uh, whatever it is that might be a need. I, I see that a big chunk of funds will come from uh, um, the, the, the pandemic. Actually, uh, w- we're doing uh, spraying and all kinds of things. And I know at one point, in order to have the students be able to return, was like a $500,000 uh, cost uh, issue. Uh, we went ahead and did it because that's what that 10% is for, is for emergencies such as that. But I would-
I'm sorry, I have to stop you there, it's been a minute.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Phil, for our next question, oh, I have this open for a reason. Um, hold on one second here. Um, so sorry. So uh, could you present your thoughts, plans and ideas on implementing project-based learning and interdisciplinary courses at the colleges?
Uh, yeah, thank you very much for that uh, question. Um, for the last several years, I've been saying, look, our primary service is education and teaching for students who are the customer. We serve the voter and the taxpayer, that's who we represent. How we learn and how we do that in today's modern world, most efficiency, most efficiently is critical. I wrote a paper at the re- at the request of the superintendent, getting research compiling on how we can do that. And faculty are now working towards doing more and more of that. The reason is, if you have multidisciplinary teaching, it's more interesting. More neural networks combined, you learn faster and faster and faster. If you do it based on what you're interested in, then people really are engaged. And if you do it on project-based learning, they really retain it and love it.
Great, thank you. Okay, uh, Stephanie, would you like to unmute yourself and answer that?
Thank you. So actually, I'm uh, the only trustee who has had a family member, or a child in my case, uh, recently attended the College of Marin. My son graduated unfortunately virtually from the College of Marin, and he's now at the University of Colorado Boulder finishing up his degree. He had the opportunity to attend a, a rather unique public school out in the Lagunitas School District that was all about uh, project-based learning and interdisciplinary um, engagement. So when I came to the board, it was my intention to help promote that idea, what, as I saw how successful it is with mo- was with my son. And I think it is something, especially with in today's, with today's students, it's something that they embrace, they are enthusiastic about. And it might be a little bit of a shift for faculty, but I think uh, they would probably enjoy having that uh, that cross-pollination across programs. I'm not an instructor, I'm not a faculty member, but I do understand what the end result would be.
Thank you. And Stuart, would you like to unmute and answer that?
I mean, project-based learning is what you use in the real world. And a lot of our students who come to comm come from high schools in the district like Drake High School, where they've actually had project-based learning over their four years of uh, high school study, where they're doing interpl- interdisciplinary learning. So I think there's a lot of students that come to the college that kind of have that basic concept in tow. For us as a board, we need to kind of like reinforce that idea so we get that buy-in from our faculty and teaching people who will, you know, incorporate that way of uh, thinking and that way of teaching in their, in their coursework. That's a tough nut to crack, since we're in that shared governance role. We don't really have a direct role in developing those programs, other than we need to strongly support that concept. And I agree with uh, Phil, it's long overdue to include those type of uh, in- instruction uh, in, in our coursework and our course material.
Thank you. Uh, Eva, do you want to unmute yourself and answer that question?
Uh, I really support uh, project-based learning and uh, as uh, Stuart mentioned, it is about the real world today in terms of how people work together in collaborative groups, and then they make decisions together. Um, uh, the, the issue on project-based learning for, for many community people are that they're not learning the facts or not learning the discipline of that particular science or mathematics. And so the, the, the best uh-
Thirty seconds. Sorry. Go ahead. You have 30 more seconds, Eva.
Oh, sorry. Um, a- and so training is really important if we move in that direction. But I think that's really a faculty decision on how much they do of it, and they have the freedom to decide that it's good in their discipline as, as a uh, uh, result. So I would leave it up to the uh, faculty, if they think it's important and need funding for it, they would probably come forward to the board to talk about it.
Okay, thank you. And Paul, would you like to unmute yourself and answer that question?
Yes, thank you so much for that question. I came to the College of Marin in 1997, and by 2000, I'd already started the first uh, project-based learning in my courses. I have, over the years, participated in many collaborative efforts, not only with public agencies and um, and organizations, but also going outside the College of Marin and pairing College of Marin students with K-12 students. Several of the studies resulting from these projects have already been published, and I'd be happy to provide the details. But one of the problems that we face, as educators I think have always faced, is that these projects don't fit into the old factory-based learning model. So when we want to innovate in the curriculum, or we need other supplies or equipment to carry out the projects, you know, they are, these requisitions often get turned down because they don't fit the model. So what that board has to do is to encourage this uh, entrepreneurship, this creativity on the part of the faculty, and I'd also say the classified staff, oh, they're great support. They, we, a- and also the students, so that everybody's working together to break out of this old box of the, of the factory-based model and on to the inspirational one.
Thank you. Okay, we're coming into our last question here for us, and we're gonna start with Stephanie for this one. Uh, so you can unmute yourself. Given that 25% of Marin's population is over 60, what is College of Marin doing to engage and provide services to this population?
Well, I am one of those. I'm over 60. Uh, and, and knowing my penchant for and, and passion for learning, um, what I believe that the board's role is to do is to help encourage the development of programs that support the interests of people over 60. And ask the right questions, uh, encourage the development of additional programs, and expand the opportunities uh, for resourcing and funding programs that uh, speak to, specifically speak to the um, the quote-unquote, I don't like saying this, the older generation. I'm one of them. Uh, but that, that's primarily the role, and that is our commitment as well. We, we have students who are a- aged 13, we have students who are 90, and everyone in between. And, and that is our population, we will continue to support that actively.
Thank you. And Stuart, you wanna unmute yourself? Thank you.
Uh, within our college mission statement is lifelong, lifelong learning. And I'm also in that demographic, and I believe that learning is essential for your health and welfare, and that I think the ability of the college to work with Escom, to provide, you know, uh, appropriate non-credit courses, community education courses, and even credit courses that are open to anybody who wants to take a class, is really important. Because the last thing we want um, older citizens to do would be isolated and not be able to get out and participate in those activities that they enjoy doing. So I think the college definitely has a role to support the programs that enforces lifelong learning and provide those opportunities for ourselves and our community.
Thank you. And Eva, do you wanna unmute yourself and answer that question? Not unmuted yet. Are you there? Um, maybe we'll come back, and uh, Paul, do you wanna unmute yourself and answer that question?
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm also in that demographic, but I want to speak to the need to avoid pigeonholing people. Uh, again, we need to integrate, we need to expand our horizons. In my classes at times, I remember this one class, my youngest student was 14 and my oldest student was 73. In laboratories, in the field, I've seen this, through the interactions among different people of different backgrounds and at different ages. So we took a surveys, I remember in, in classes back in 2005, and we thought, oh, the younger people are gonna be transferred, the older people are gonna be lifelong learning. I, we found that there was a, there was a physics student taking the class for personal enjoyment. That, and the sharing of experience, we have to encourage. So again, we need to break out of that old model, uh, encourage people to mix their experiences and, and their, their backgrounds, uh, to build a stronger college altogether.
Thank you. Eva, are you back yet? Maybe we lost her, I'm not sure. Uh, Phil, do you wanna unmute yourself and answer that question? Maybe we'll have one more question then.
I, I think, see, I think, I think Eva's back now.
Go ahead.
Eva, are you there?
Okay, go ahead and keep going. I'm, I'm monitoring, keep going.
Okay, Phil, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So I think the prior question relates to this question as well. I mean, you wanna make it of interest, you wanna make it, if possible, when they're interested, multidisciplinary. And you wanna make it project-based or event-based. I mean, there's so much thirst for more information and knowledge from people that have lots of experience, they want more. And so I think we need to continue to do that. And prior to the pandemic, we're getting more and more interest to have more activities on campus. Integrate that into our training and teaching, um, stay in tune with what people want. But they want to be intellectually stimulated, and I think they desire to do that. And collaborating with people of all ages, where people could actually mentor and teach. Because at the end of the day, we're all learning, and if we're not learning, we're teaching. So back and forth, and I think college is in a great position to allow that generation and on to benefit from College of Marin services in this area.
Great, thank you. Okay, one last try. Eva, are you there?
I am.
Oh, yay. Okay, do you wanna answer that question? Okay, we lost you in that short amount of time.
Yeah, uh, it's fine. Uh, uh, what I was hearing was many of the ideas I had also. Uh, but I want to uh, point to the re-entry program for adults. And it's a wonderful program that anytime, any, any time of age or uh, uh, job, uh, you know, job uh, boredom or whatever, that we have a great re-entry program, and they're highly supported because we get some of the funds from unemployment. And so if they want to come, they really need to know about that program. And we've educated a lot of people midlife that have uh, just regained their energy and uh, uh, changed professions, and so um, community college is real uh, gateway to, to learning. Uh, in addition, I think more and more, we need to uh, keep in mind that the senior population in, in our Meritus program is the same amount that, that's in our regular program. It's a big, big population. And uh, I think we could do more and more sustained so that they don't have to worry about, you know, budgets being reduced and so forth, and I think-
Thank you, Eva. Thank you. That's, that's the minute. Thank you. Okay, well, this concludes the question portion of the forum. Before the candidates make their closing statements, I wanna share some key information about this year's election, particularly on how and when you can vote. We're fortunate to have an outstanding elections department in Marin headed by Registrar of Voters Linda Roberts. Be assured that the counting of ballots for this year's election is being conducted with the highest level of security, honesty and integrity. Election Day is officially November 3rd, and you have until October 19th to register. After that, you will have to go to the elections office to register and vote in person. Due to COVID-19 and the need to ensure safe, accessible voting, the State of California has implemented new expanded voting options. Slide four, please. All active registered voters in California will automatically receive a ballot in the mail. Vote-by-mail ballots were mailed out to Marin County voters last week. Voting by mail now underway is the safest way to vote during this pandemic. You have several options for returning your completed ballot. You can send it through the US Mail, postage paid. Mailed ballots must be postmarked by November 3rd and received at the elections office no later than November 20th. You can drop it in any one of the 12 secure drop boxes located around the county. A list of the official authorized Dropbox locations is included with your ballot. As instances of unofficial collection receptacles are being reported across the state, please be sure that you are using an official Dropbox. Or you can hand-deliver your ballot to the elections office at the Civic Center, starting now, or to any polling place once they're open. Slide five, please. If you are voting in person, note that as a result of recent legislation, there are fewer polling places for this election. Your assigned polling place is printed on the back cover of the voter information guide and sample ballot that you received in the mail. Be sure to check this before heading to the polls, your assigned polling place may be different from past elections. There will be 29 consolidated polling places open for four days, October 31st through November 3rd. Masks and social distancing will be required, and a limited number of people will be allowed inside at any one time. It is also possible to vote in person at the elections department in the Civic Center during regular business hours from now to election day. New legislation allows the processing of ballots to begin as of October 5th. Vote-by-mail ballots are counted as they are received at the elections department. Counts from ballots received at least five days before the election will be included in the election night results announced on November 3rd. Otherwise, your ballot results will be included in the final results announced on December 3rd. So make a plan now and vote safely. For more information about Dropbox and polling locations, go to Marinvotes.org or call 415-473-6456. Thank you. At the end of this forum, there will be a slide listing several additional websites we recommend for more detailed election information, including VotersEdge.org. And now the candidates will make closing statements of one minute, and will go in reverse order of- and will go in reverse order of the opening statements. So we will start with Stuart Tannenberg. Would you please unmute and give us your closing statement?
Uh, thank you again, SCOM and Legal Women Voters. I'm seeking reelection to continue as your effective and productive trustee representative on the College of Marin Board. I'm committed to continuing the complex and rewarding work of a college trustee and ask for your vote on November 3rd. I will provide the ongoing leadership, engagement, and discipline to deliver accountability and oversight that enables the College of Marin to continue as a leading community college institution. In addition, I will work to protect the financial, physical, and other assets of the district, balancing the needs of all constituents to ensure the long-range institutional planning continues on track. Working in collaboration with my board colleagues, colleagues and college president, I will continue to support the College of Marin's commitment to education excellence, grounded in providing equitable opportunities and fostering student success for all of our diverse college community. I have the knowledge, ability, and experience to continue to represent you and ask for your vote on November 3rd. And hopefully, our, the answers we provided this evening have shown you what an asset is College of Marin is to our community.
Thank you. Stephanie, would you like to unmute yourself and?
Thank you. So Laura, thank you so much. Those questions were excellent. Um, I really appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts on these issues with you and with the audience. I will reiterate my, my perspective that as a trustee, I'm here to represent the community as a whole. I take this role very seriously and have completed both the Effective Trustees Certification and their Recertification Program offered by the California Community League of Cali, uh, the Community College League of California. This has helped me to perform the role as effectively as possible. I'm committed to continuing my work on behalf of the students, employers, taxpayers, faculty, and staff of our college and county to, to the best of my ability for the next four years. Finally, I want to call out the fact that I have declared, uh, declined all campaign donations and have encouraged my supporters to donate to the college, uh, Community Colleges Foundation to support struggling students. They have been adversely impacted by this COVID pandemic, more so than anyone else. And I'd like to thank all of you who have done this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Phil, would you like to unmute yourself and give us your closing statement?
We've made much progress at COM in learning and teaching, operations, employee recruitment and retention, modernizing sustainable facilities, and maintaining strong financials. In fact, we have a renewed employee enthusiasm, commitment, collaboration, and satisfaction with 70% new faculty over the last seven years. We've accomplished a lot during this time. And yet, now, we're at a critical juncture in the college's history, especially in light of the current economic climate in the state and nationally. It's imperative that we maintain a high-quality and stable community college, one that can maximize its offerings to the community. I strongly believe that it's important for me to continue to lend my experiences and skills to the community in this capacity. I've been a catalyst to make this success, and we could build on this. Let's keep the momentum going. Please visit my website at Cranenburg, PhilCranenburg.com, and vote for Cranenburg with a K. Thank you.
Thank you. And Paul, would you like to unmute yourself and give us your closing statement?
Thank you so much. Legitimacy is an important quality of government, whatever the level. Of course, free and fair elections help to produce this. However, it is also important for a governing body to have the information and experience necessary to carry out its functions. Certain essential information can only be provided by people with particular kinds of experience. If that information is lacking, bad decisions will be made. Our current multiple crises are good evidence of this. The College of Marin Board of Trustees has a function of making decisions about education. It should not lack educators. Although other kinds of experience are very useful and desirable on the board, without the experience of educators, how good can its decisions be? I am the only candidate who has experience as a teacher, and administrator, and a student at our college. A vote for me is a vote for legitimacy, for good government, and for good decision-making. More information is available at PaulDeSilloForCOM.org. I thank you very much for a wonderfully organized forum.
Thank you. Okay, and then Eva, would you like to give us your closing statement?
Yes, um, it's been a pleasure to serve Marin community, uh, during the years that I've served in the role of the trustee. I take it very seriously. I follow up. I know when, you know, I get phone calls or notes, I try to follow up and, and try to solve problems. And so you can count on me to solve problems, and then sometimes even better than that. Additionally, um, I enjoy, uh, people a lot. And what it means is I take time to speak with students. Almost every year, I shepherd a student through and stay in contact. And, um, so I'm, you know, uh, pleased if I'm reelected. And, uh, if you want to know more about me, I have a webpage. And I have, uh, a, what I call a rogue Facebook that somebody put up for me. And, uh, it's very enjoyable because they use children and other, uh, adults in, in it. And you might find a little bit of fun. Anyway, thank you very much for a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Eva. Thank you, and thank you to all of you. This concludes our forum. Thank you to SCOM for hosting tonight's event and to Marin Promise for their support. And thank you to the candidates for participating, to Linda Soula for timekeeping, to Ann Batman and Nancy Weber and Susan Stumpf for reviewing questions, and to Nancy Bell and Didi Batori for Zoom support. And a special thanks to the team at CMCMTV. We could not have done this without you. A video of tonight's forum will be posted on the League's website in the next few days. Slide six, please. For more information about the election, the candidates, and ballot measures, visit the League's website at MarinLJV.org and click on the Voters Edge logo in the middle of the page. Here are some additional recommended websites. Thank you. Thank you again for joining us tonight, and most importantly, thank you for voting. Good night.